Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day that you have provided us and the ability to gather in your presence to discuss the important business of Henry County. Please grant us the wisdom that surpasses all human understandings and the ability to work together. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call please.
This is a regular meeting of the Henry County Board of County Commissioners being held on Tuesday, March 10th, 2020, 5:00 PM, in the City Commissioner's Chambers in Cluston, Florida. In attendance are Chairman Mitchell Wills, Vice Chair Emma Byrd, Commissioner Darrell Harris, Commissioners Michael Swindle, County Administrator Jennifer Davis, County Attorney Mark Matt, Ad Interim Clerk Kimberly Bearne.
Thank you very much. As we get started tonight, if anyone wishes to speak tonight, if you would, there are speaker cards if you would fill it out and get it back to the clerk. That'd be amazing. And when we get to the portion that you signed up for, we'll get you called up. First thing on the agenda tonight is under bids, ITB 2020-09.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Byrd. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Just for point of clarification, and in the reading it says funding from the road and bridge budget. None of this was out of the loan that we've taken on. This is all improvement projects that you've got to do. So this is none of the improvements that we want to do that we have a loan for.
That's correct. This is from the County Transportation Tax Fund, except for a small portion, which is coming from public safety for the EMS station repairs in the back where we had a large dips due to the former landfill.
Is this all gas tax money?
Except for the EMS station parking lot.
Do you think that bids, did you know the company that got the low bid?
Yes, sir. They've done two miscellaneous resurfacing projects for us. They've also done County Road 78 for us. They're the, they did the last one where we paved through Kaluska Estates and other roads.
You're not going to pull another 40 no road, are you?
No, this is just resurfacing.
Okay.
And that wasn't me, that was a contractor.
Kevin Sheed was the one picked him because he's cheap.
I think he said it was us that picked him. He just said, okay.
Yeah, that's right.
He's the one told us.
We ain't gonna do that again.
No.
Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. RFQ 2020-06.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Byrd.
Discussion, what's this Harlem Community Sidewalks?
Yeah.
It's not in your district.
Yeah.
Thank you, Laura.
Right here. It's sidewalks in Harlem going from 7th along Florida to 10th and then picking up, I think it's on 11th going to 13th along Carolina.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I had a quick question on that. You know, there was, obviously you had first and second ranked firm on the, this is on the Harlem stuff, correct?
sidewalk.
Okay. You're going to send that out now for bids, are you only going to do it with the top-ranked firm?
It's going for a design contract.
Going for a design.
The number one ranked firm. I'll negotiate a contract with them.
And so now the number one ranked firm, who, I don't know from Adam's house cat, by the way, they were essentially the selected firm by one point. You're going to lock in a contract with them on design build?
Not design build, just design.
Just design?
Right.
FDOT is paying for that.
Yes.
But we're just going to, we're going to move forward and let FDOT, they'll reimburse? How does that work exactly?
They do it the same way they do for all our other sidewalks. We pay upfront and then we invoice DOT and they reimburse us back.
Okay.
It usually, we usually try to invoice every month.
Okay. And so, and so there is no benefit in having two people go into the table on design because there's just not enough volume there for them to even do that.
Yep, can't do it. Also because the way we had our procurement set up.
Okay.
Our package was we're selecting one firm and we had everything spelled out.
All right, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion in a second already, Mr. Chairman?
We do, yes, sir. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda?
Motion to approve. I didn't know if anyone needed to pull. I had one item on minutes. I just, I just wanted y'all to look back through the, almost staff to look back through the February 25th meeting. There was, there was a question I had on the vote with regards to the recreation discussion that we had. It said that we were unanimous and it just seemed like there was a tremendous amount of more discussion that we had than what is dictated in the notes. So I'm glad that we have them recorded now, obviously, if someone were so moved to want to engage.
It said unanimous.
It was.
We questioned it, but then did we fix that? What ultimately ended up happening?
Yeah, we did. Actually, it was a misunderstanding.
Okay.
So we fixed the misunderstanding when it was unanimous vote.
Perfect.
And, Mr. Chairman, I totally agree and I felt the same thing. Not that I had a problem necessarily with the vote, but I see what you're saying, but the narrative of what we were saying seemed very, very paraphrased.
Right.
I was reading some of the stuff that I said and I was like, well, that's only one little short snippet of what really the message was.
Yes, sir.
We got off track.
Yeah, well, even the part we were on track about was kind of paraphrased to a very, very condensed version.
Yes, yes. And I think, I just think that the gist of the conversation is not carried forth. It's very ironic that you feel the same way.
Yep, absolutely.
And so I just, I would like for you, Ms. Davis, to look at that and give us your two cents and that's it in a nutshell. So I'll stand by my motion to approve consent as presented.
We got a motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nothing under awards and perils. The first thing under public hearings tonight is petition, RZ 19-0014. It's a continuance from February 25th.
Yes, Commissioners, this is the RZ 19-0014, the request to rezone property from general agriculture to heavy industrial. There were comments from the public at the previous meeting and...
Mr. Chairman, we're just going to move it to the March meeting.
We're just going to move it to the, so...
I don't think you need to move it.
We don't need action on that, correct?
Yes, you do.
We do. I'll make a motion to approve to the March 24th, make a continuance to the March 24th board meeting.
Second.
In LaBelle, 5:00 PM, in the boardroom, board chambers.
Yes.
Okay, this is a hearing of the public. If any one of the public would like to address this. We got a motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion on the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nothing under action or FYI. So we're staff reports, Ms. Davis.
We're moving into new territory, Mr. Chairman. This is going to break a record. 517, I think, is the record.
We're not done yet.
Got a long way to go.
It's going to be up to me and I ain't messing it up.
This is just a placeholder. I didn't have a formal update. I was hoping Mr. Martin, he was going to be here and give an update from his board's perspective on the latest conversation with the library discussion that we've had. But I would say that, just to give you all an update, we all met, Anne and I met with some of the library advisory members and I see some of them are here tonight and our library coordinators here tonight, Mrs. Hayes, as well, and answered some of the questions that they may have. I personally feel like we need to move forward with trying to establish some kind of agreement with Glades and Okeechobee County. I think the biggest concern is timing and, you know, this would not go into effect until October 1st. If, for whatever reason, we weren't able to negotiate a proper document, a proper agreement, then it would go to the following year. And so from our perspective, you know, we have specific issues and concerns that we have that we would protect during that negotiation process. And I don't believe this would happen, but if it were to fall apart, then, then we don't have anything to lose. I mean, of course, time is money, of course, but, but I believe that it would be in the betterment of the entire county and for the library system to move forward with trying to negotiate some kind of agreement. There would be an additional 320, approximately $325,000 that could be contributed to the cooperative as a whole. If anyone, if anyone wanted to speak tonight, if they had any concerns or comments, you know, I think that would be appropriate. But again, this was more of an update. I'm not asking you to do anything tonight. If Mr. Martin comes maybe in a little while, if he wants to speak, I really wanted him to, from his perspective, give an update from his board's perspective because the city of Cluston Board is the library cooperative board. So that was, you know, the gist of me putting this on the agenda. And if you had any questions, I could, I could answer them.
So does all, does LaBelle and Moore Haven, Cluston, they all meet and agree on it?
Well, and we're still in that process. I think we've all met and I think that everyone has, I think conceptually they...
Agreed on it.
I don't want to speak for them, but, but there are some concerns and some questions. So I'm not going to say that 100%, but I think everybody sees the value if we can negotiate a proper agreement that everybody's comfortable with.
And there's nothing to lose.
I don't think there's anything to lose on our end. Now, Glades and Okeechobee, of course, you know, they're in a separate, they're in a separate cooperative and I think in good faith, if we move forward, we should try, in good faith, to try to make that work for everybody's sake. But from a timing perspective, we are, you know, we're okay. We're, we're, we're good to continue to do exactly what we're doing now. But I would like to see the conversation move forward.
So if everything moves forward, it'd still be to October before?
It would still be October 1st. So we would have between now and then...
That's a long time.
To work out an agreement. And that is a long time.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, after speaking with different parties that's involved, everybody's not ready to move forward. They, they love the ideal. They have so many questions that's unanswered. Who's going to do this? Who's going to handle this? And I think with the timing to push it forward, it's just kind of premature for the people that's involved. So they don't, they, Glades County is head of co-op, Okeechobee, but not Henry County. So it's a lot of questions that's unanswered. Yes, the money would increase, but they're just not sure who's going to do what. And if we, if we go ahead and make, you answer this one, if we go ahead and make the agreement now and they put something in writing, so April, is it April the 15th or April the 1st? Do they have to give an agreement to?
For Glades and Okeechobee, they need to give their notice of intent to withdraw from their current, from their current cooperative. And so, you know, they, they are, would be doing that in good faith and that's why we originally, and it's not before you tonight, we still have another meeting that we could do it if you so choose to do it, but that's why we originally asked for you all to consider approving a resolution of intent. You all had some comments about, well, we want some back out clauses and things like that. I'm not the attorney, but a resolution of intent is exact, it's our intention to try to work out this agreement. We have between now, there's a lot of unanswered questions. There is. There's not enough time to get all that worked out by April 1st, I don't believe, because there's too many things. But I think there's plenty of time between now and October to come up with something that everybody's comfortable with. And if, and if we get to a place where we're not comfortable, then we won't do it.
So then with that, what happens to Glades and Okeechobee? Because they have to know by April the 1st, if they put that intent in place...
So again, it's my understanding, it's the same thing. It's there, it's there, it's, you exercise your right. We do that with like insurance and different things. We, we kind of put people on notice that we might withdraw from a pool or we might do this. And so it's my understanding, it's the same thing.
So there is a deadline?
For Glades and Okeechobee, just to give that notice.
Okay.
And their deadline's April 1st, right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That's what it sounds like, yes. And as far as we know, they're moving forward?
They're, they're really still watching us and our conversation, they're probably watching now to see, to see what, you know, our conversation is. They need a comfort level and I, and I understand that and I can appreciate that. And if not, and if we don't have that comfort level to be able to do it, they, we would, it would be pushed another year, but that would be October 20...
21.
2.
Lower.
No, 21.
21.
21.
Mr. Chairman, so two things I want to ask. First off, Ms. Davis, your recommendation is to move forward with this on the 24th meeting. All things staying consistent right now, you're thinking, your, your sense of the situation tells you this is a potential good thing for Henry County to move forward and join the cooperative with Glades and Okeechobee County?
Create a new cooperative with Glades and Okeechobee County, yes.
That's your recommendation?
It is.
Okay. I'll, first off, I don't know if we go with that recommendation, but I love the fact that you got a recommendation and you're saying this is, this is what I suggest. I love that. My second question is, y'all sent some dates for, I think maybe everybody else has already given a date for us to meet with Glades County. Is it, are any of the dates between now and our 24th meeting? Would we want to have a meeting where this is a front? No? Okay, so that's not a possibility. Okay. Then that leads to my third question that I didn't say I was going to ask. Are we, are we okay in the interim with you having some sort of a, of a conversation where you sit down with the powers to be, which is the Cluston Library Board? You, you once again assure us that you've talked to all of the library board members because I'm going to tell you right now, to Ms. Byrd's comments, what I've been told thus far is, let's, one of the, my favorite quotes of all time is, "Your emergency ain't my problem." And it was said a little bit smoother than that, but that's the gist of it. I get that completely. And so, you know, unfortunately, I'm sometimes the person that's saying it's an emergency. But the gist of what I'm saying is, is that you have time in the next 14 days, right, to meet with the Cluston Library Board, which is the City of Cluston Commission, Randy, the Cluston Library powers to be, those people that are influential in that conversation, Harlem Library, Glades County and Okeechobee. And then we can, you can also talk with all those different parties and then still tell us whether you're for it or against, right?
And I believe, and I believe in what we've heard is that they think it's a potential good thing, but the, the timing, like I said before, is a concern.
Yeah.
And so that's just summarizing, not putting words in any one person's mouth.
But you can't get that worked out by October 1st?
I believe we can get it worked out between October 1st.
Well, Mr. Chairman, my, my, my big concern is that the library director for the city of Cluston Library, everything I hear is that it's, it's never, no offense to any other previous, you know, what are they called, media specialists or I don't know, but librarians is what we call them. But we don't call them stewardesses anymore either, so I'm a boomer, right? But the gist of what I'm saying is, is that they're knocking it out of the park. Everybody feels really good about the city of Cluston Library right now and I don't want to disrupt that in an effort to say, oh, we're going to bring more dollars and cents into it, but yet we lose care, custody and control over that conversation. So I just want to make sure that we have all of those bases covered and, you know, I have complete faith in the county administrator to give us a solid recommendation. I appreciate you saying you're in favor of it, but I want to, I want to check, double check and recheck again before we move down this path because, you know, you don't have agreements and contracts for when everything is going wonderfully. You have that because it's all going to fall apart and you got to now exercise that agreement and back out. And so that's it.
So even with speaking with the Harlem Library, I met with them, they was, it wasn't that they was in not an agreement with it, but they felt like it was moving too fast. Same thing with some of the, the city librarians. They felt like it was moving too fast. They, they just had questions that was not answered. So that made them uncomfortable. Who would distribute this? Who would be over it? And who would like, I believe in one of me's, Randy said that it'd be two, two and two and then we find it'd be two, not four twos, but it'd be six. That's an uneven vote. So those kind of things came in play in the March. I was told that the March grant is not a guaranteed grant. So they was pushing it because of the grant, but that was not, also was not a guaranteed grant.
So the agreement is whatever we all agree to, right? So it's, there was a recommendation, for example, by Randy to say, well, we could, for example, the board, the composition of the board. So right now, we have three libraries in Henry County and the board, the library cooperative board is the city of Cluston.
Commission.
Commission.
We have no say.
We have no, no representation, for example, LaBelle and Harlem. So I mean, I'm just...
But, Mr. Chairman, to that point though, it's...
It is what?
It's working seamlessly, no?
It's okay.
And then, and then you would also have to argue that in the event something were to run amok in Harlem, that Harlem Library Board, I don't know what it's called exactly, but the people that are meeting to discuss the Florida B. Thomas Library are going to, are going to rise up and say, hey, this isn't working well.
Sure.
And the same thing for the Bearin Library, right? I mean, I know every time I have heard about an update from the Bearin Library, it's come directly from you via this board. And so, you know, we've done a good job of marrying all that together, but I do think the composition, you know, changes.
But the new board could be whatever you wanted it to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Isn't there a 30-day clause to withdraw?
Well, I believe it's a year, the way the state funds and I could stand corrected, but I believe it would be a year contract. And so, again, it's a year.
Then if you didn't like it, you just pull out.
And if something, if it wasn't proper, then you would get out of it the following year. But we don't, we, we want to improve things, not make them worse. But there was a recommendation of...
I have a suggestion, but I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Davis.
Of so many members per library. Of course, we have three libraries and then they only have a library apiece for Glades and Okeechobee. It was then also just, you know, stated what the current, what the current composition is for the existing cooperative, where Highlands, I believe, has three libraries and then there's all the other counties, but they each have the same equal number of members per county. So again, it's whatever we, and so that would be the time between now and October that we'd have to work those things out. And if, and if we can't work them out, that we're, that we're comfortable and everybody's comfortable, then we wouldn't, you know, obviously, we wouldn't move forward.
So, Mr. Chairman, one of the things that was brought, if we chose to move forward, they asked that we at least meet or the, the city meet at least once a month to bring these things to the table, the question that they have that's not answered. How would you pick the board? Who's going to be responsible for what? Because they don't want to go in not knowing the information ahead of time. So that was what was asked.
But didn't you say as a rep from each library?
Well, that, it's all to be determined.
Obsession to be determined.
Every bit of it is to be determined.
But I mean, it sounds like a good idea.
It could, it could be, or a combination of those two ideas, for example. You know, there's a lot of different ways that you could, that you could comprise it.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Davis, please help me wrap my arm around so that I completely understand. So we can move forward with an April 1st agreement and they can move forward with applying for a grant, but we have all the way until October to make sure that we have comfort level before we move forward into any type of agreement?
We can move...
And then we can hear from our boards, our constituents, the folks and from our libraries to make sure that they and we are comfortable.
I wouldn't say agreement. So I would say we would move forward at the next meeting for a resolution of intent.
Okay.
So they could give their, it's a good faith gesture that we will...
I see.
Work towards an agreement...
Okay.
Before October. If for whatever reason it couldn't happen, we, we wouldn't move forward.
Okay.
And, and, and go that route.
That gives us that six months, five months, five and a half months, whatever that may be then, to, to make sure that we have comfort level, our local, our current library board has comfort level and we're all okay with it.
We would meet with all the library advisory boards.
Right.
Get all their input, make sure we have all their comments and concerns addressed, you know, accordingly and it wouldn't, it wouldn't move forward unless all that was taken care of.
Okay, understood.
It is.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The only, I mean, one of the next questions I have is, I don't, I don't understand why we don't have the data sets in front of us right now. Like, I remember at the meeting that we had for Henry Glades, I believe the director that spoke was, was a representative from the Okeechobee County community that was pushing this initiative. And, and I remember there were a lot of numbers and a lot of things that were proposed that made sense from a fiscal standpoint. And it was, you know, it was a win for us fiscally. But what I don't understand is, I, has anybody seen anything that shows what we have today and then what it would become? And, and then what the breakdown is?
I provided that in a write-up a few meetings ago...
Uh huh.
With all the proposed...
And that's the one, the increase goes from what to what?
From, well, we would keep all our state funding now.
Yep.
And then if we form this new cooperative with three counties, because the number of counties matters.
Yep.
It would be about 325,000 more.
330 was the increase that I recall.
Okay.
And so, and so I guess, Ms. Davis, for me, I mean, I just, I want to know, the next thing being, I still just think you ought to make it just as plain as the big nose that's on my face. And what is it today? You know, a rescind of what is it today? What is, what is the new number that would be projected? How does that get broken down? What the composition consists of? And then I think you lock the librarians in a room and you say, what is your big, your big holdup? You know, is, you know, care, custody and control of books or, you know, I don't know how it all breaks down, but, and I don't want to actually. I want to set policy that it relates to, you know, what we're doing for the day because I got enough bandwidth issues.
Well, the concern is, I think everybody's happy with the way things are going and they want to make sure that we don't have a disruption in our current library system. And it's our understanding that we would continue, from the state perspective, that we would continue to do what we're doing now within our Henry Cooperative and fold in these other two counties.
Me?
Yes, sir.
Before you marry three...
State's name for the record, sir.
Raoul Batalla.
Thank you.
Before you marry three facilities, I would think that one of the first questions is, what does each one need? Do they have aspirations? Does one of them need to grow a tremendous amount? Do they need a real injection of cash? I haven't heard anything about people's comfort levels and I don't know what that means. But really, I mean, I can look at LaBelle's library and it's, it's about 100 years out of date. And I mean, you could, and what they need to do, to me, is to bring it into the 21st century completely. So, I mean, don't the different facilities have different needs and they're going to need different amounts of money?
I can answer some of that. The cooperative money would be shared dollars throughout the entire cooperative and we would identify, or the board, the new, this new board we're talking about, would identify the needs for each one of those libraries. And I would say that all the libraries need additional funding because for technology and, and different materials, there's different programs and for educational purposes that you could partner for tutoring and different things that, you know, the constituents need of Henry County. And I think these dollars would go a long way to help fill some of those needs in all of our libraries.
Right.
Would that mean, uh, they wouldn't just get divided five ways?
I don't think it's that.
It's like if one really needed more than this one?
I believe that the board would make that recommendation, and within the state guidelines, that they would, um, is it equal?
No.
No. If you can go, if you don't
If you would, come up, yes, ma'am, please.
Natasha Hayes, um, coordinator for Hendry County. With the funds being shared that we would get, we look at about $322,000 if we partner with Glades and Okeechobee County. Those, um, funds would be shared, um, equally amongst the cooperative. So, we couldn't just divvy out, um, $50,000 here, $25,000 for this program. It was pretty much consume of our operating software throughout the cooperative, um, courier service, special items, um, that we all could access, um, things like that. It wouldn't be just cash to each.
So, it's shared services?
Correct. That cooperative funding has to be shared amongst the entire cooperative for the exact same reasons.
Ms. Hayes, do you feel like the increase in services that would be, uh, shared and brought as a result of this i- is worth? I mean, from your perspective, is it worth the val- the value?
It is.
Do you see any threats? What are the threats that you perceive?
I don't see any threats. Um, we have concerns, um, such as it's been mentioned. I know my board is, you know, worried about how that board, you know, who would appoint the board that we're speaking of? You know, how that would be formed? Um, you know, who would monitor and expend our local dollars that we get now? They really wanted to be sure that the state aid that we currently get would still come here and be administered here locally. Um, so even if whoever the new cooperative director is for the multi-county, they would, you know, just be responsible for the new grant that say comes on board.
Okay.
Um, I can let Ms. Tony speak on some other concerns that they have. But overall, this is a good thing. This is not bad.
Okay.
Um, we will be, you know, bringing into additional counties, you know, so you'll have more people at the table. So, it won't just be Hendry County, you know, making the decisions for our libraries any longer. So, you know, you take that into, you know, consideration. But, um, what were some other concerns that we had?
I'd love to hear Ms. Couse come up, she doesn't mind.
Yeah, I can't, can't think of any other.
I'm Tony Couse, and I'm on the current, um, Clueston Library Board, and I'm also on the Hendry County Cooperative Board. And to give you some history, the Hendry County Cooperative Board has a representative from the Clueston Library, LaBelle Library, and Harlem Library. In fact, I think they just chose a person, because we had, had a vacancy. And you guys, the county commissioners, appoint someone from the county. There's, that, that spot needs to be filled, because the person who's currently serving has had health issues, Jerry Yorschak, and she can't continue. So, anyway, that's how the current cooperative works, with each library having a representative, the City of Clueston having a representative, and the county commissioners having a representative. Our concerns are mainly, we have a functioning cooperative that handles the state money, distributes it. Like she just said, we don't, we're not opposed to change. What we're worried about is, who's gonna create this board? How's this board gonna work it out in four months? And if, and my question to Jennifer is, if they don't work it out, we walk away. True or false?
True.
True. Okay, so, y- you don't really, it, it's, and, and let me ask a question that you may not be able to answer. Glades County and Okeechobee, do they, they, they declare intent, but they can still be in it if, if this falls through? True or false?
My understanding.
Okay.
I'll say, I'll say it that way. I've, I've made a call to both of those managers, and I haven't been able to connect with them. But I, that was the question that I was asking.
May I clarify that?
Sure.
You said they can still be in it.
I'm sorry, they can still be in the current cooperative.
Okay, got it.
They, they can declare, uh, my question is, they declare intent by all, April 1st, and then, let's say, September 30th, we're not, it's not working, we decide, we're fine. We already have a functioning cooperative.
Right.
Okay? They're the ones that I, I assume, again, they can go back to what, they, they haven't really left yet. They've just said, we have an intent to leave. This is the way I understand it. And, uh, so, really, the, uh, current cooperative, Hendry County Cooperative, the governing board is the city commission.
Mm-hmm.
So, my question is, who's gonna sit down and decide who represents us, meaning Harlem, LaBelle, Clueston, and who represents Glades, and who represents, and how many? And, and we can hash it out the best we can, but I've told the city commission, just like I'm saying to you, we are the plum in the pie. We have the large operating budget that the other two counties wanna tag into, because the money that you get is based on the operating, um, amounts that you spend. And we have a good expansion of, of expenditure of four something.
Four sixty-five.
Four sixty-five.
Wait, 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 Mr. Chair. Four hundred and sixty-five K?
Mm-hmm.
For just the City of Clueston Library?
The cooperative.
The cooperative. Yep. Okay. So, instantly, you double that.
Well, no, that's, the ten, ten cents?
Ten cents on the dollar.
Ten cents on the dollar.
Okay.
Comes from that.
Okay.
And Glades County has seventy thousand?
Seventy.
Okay? And, uh, Okeechobee's two something, two fourteen, two, help me.
Ten, I think.
Two ten. So, you can see, if you took the four, sixty, two ten, and seventy, where the, where the gorilla in the room is. So, we, we bring a lot to them, ju- and, and I'm not saying that smugly or smartly, I'm not trying to be obnoxious about it.
No.
But, um, they, they, we, we need to realize that we should go in with a little bit strength position, because, first of all, we're a functioning cooperative. Yes, there's more money out there. I'm not arguing that. And, but we don't wanna lose how we function, even though there would be a new board and a new director. And we would wanna somehow keep that intact to keep our state money coming. Now, the way I understand it, help me, uh, the state money comes in, each library gets their state money, and, and it could be written up that nobody touches how you get your state money. I mean, you just keep doing what you've been doing.
But we've just, but because we've added more to the, to the mix, they're gonna get more in the
This, the state budget's different from this cooperative bu- money, money. This is extra money, because somehow the state of Florida, and I can't speak for them, they somehow look, look kindly onto cooperatives, and they, they wanna encourage them. So, of course, they put money on the table to encourage counties and, and, uh, to come together and, uh, work together. And I don't know how that benefits the state, because I can't speak for that, but that's where the money comes from. It's an extra pool of money. I don't even think it has to be spent every year.
It does not.
It doesn't even have to be spent. It can be carried forward. So, um, I mean, we'd be foolish not to consider it, but at the same time, we don't wanna lose the autonomy that we've had, meaning, uh, we're a good, functioning cooperative, um, with five people right now, we need, you know, we've had some illness and we have to replace. But, um, I just, who's gonna, here's my question. Who's gonna, who's going to suggest how this board is made up? I know Mr. Martin has an idea of each library, and then each county commission appoints somebody. That would be eight people. And that would leave Hendry County with four, and Glades with two, and Okeechobee with two. Now, I don't know about you, but math and voting, and it's even, I can see a four to four, to four to four, to four to four.
I, I don't, I don't see where you got eight at. Can you help me?
Oh, I'm sorry. We have three libraries in Clueston.
Yep.
And, um, where, oh, and, and, and someone would be appointed from the county commission.
Okay, so that's where, okay.
Yeah. Each county commission would have one
See, I just got, I just
And five libraries.
I had seven. I had one from LaBelle, one from Clueston, one from Hendry, one from Okeechobee, one from Okeechobee County, one from Glades, one from More Haven. I stopped at seven. The composition would be three essentially from Hendry County, or with Hendry County ties, with Clueston, LaBelle, and us.
That's the libraries.
Yes, ma'am. So, we take that, we push it.
That's three libraries.
I didn't, I didn't have another one.
And then there's one library in Glades and one in, uh, uh, Okeechobee. That's five libraries.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, there'd be five representatives. This is, was been proposed by Mr. Martin. I wish he was here.
He is.
Oh, he is here.
I stuck in.
Oh, good, okay. Right, five, five proposed, and then one from, appointed by each county commission group.
And I would just, I would just
But eight, to me, I don't know how that works.
I would do eight. I would do seven. And I wouldn't have one from each library then. I would have a, I would have a City of Clueston representative, a City of LaBelle representative, a Hendry County representative, a City of More Haven representative,
Four.
A Glades County representative,
Five.
Okeechobee County representative, and a City of Okeechobee representative.
And then
Seven.
And then, and then we, who bring the best budget, are outnumbered.
Outnumbered four to, four to three in the event they lobby. But I'm a better lobbyist. So, we're gonna love on them and, and make it all work better. And then it still goes back to Ms. Couse. I think you have the ability to write up in the agreement, and that's why I say you just, you just, I'm, strong arm is the wrong way to use it, but you posture the agreement to where we protect our
Yes.
Our bottom line.
That's our main concern, and, and Mr. Martin had some bullet points that he, I'm sure he'll share with you, but one of them was to craft an agreement that allows the City of Clueston and Hendry County the opportunity to continue to function in the, in the manner that we currently function in, and the, and the inter-local agreement that we have already.
So, like, the money that y'all been bringing in, why, why couldn't that just stay the same?
That's what we're
That's what they're proposing.
That's what we're proposing.
So, that's the way
And that each library, like, I don't know how, how much Glades gets from the state of Florida, and I don't know about Okeechobee, they could just do their own thing, as far as state operating money.
Yes, ma'am.
But this cooperative thing is this extra pool, where to go?
Right.
Pool of money, that, that that's where you'll have to have a board and a director who is taking that, those funds, and pulling them together for the entire system. So, like you said, for system-wide things, like you've heard, courier service, the salary of that director, whoever that person is.
But I would just, I would
Or IT person. Maybe you have to have a, a county, I mean, a system-wide IT person.
But that, I, I, Mr. Chair, I just go back to, I, I know the will of this board, and I'm, I'm gonna speak for y'all, and y'all tell me if I'm wrong, but, Ms. Couse, my, our goal is, is never to create more of those layers, you know what I mean? I think that we would wanna, we would wanna craft that agreement to where it, it leaves it to where whoever our IT person is that's helping or assisting, they stay in that role, and they serve as our three. I, I'm so thankful that we're having this large of a conversation, but I also think that is one of those policies that has to be on paper that simply qualifies you for more dollars from a state revenue sharing source. And I, and I think it may be just that simple. You know, if you don't, if you don't have it, and you can't show it, and if we were, and if we were savvy enough to be able to, to, uh, find a million dollars and push it towards that account, then it qualifies us for X number of dollars more. You know, I don't know if there's even a cap on it. So, um, I, you know, we got fourteen days, right, before we, before we are gonna revisit it and make a decision? And I think that y'all are definitely receptive to meeting with our county administrator and the City of Clueston
Oh, yeah.
Manager to, to vet it. Uh, Mr. Chairman, and I think, kinda putting all that together, I don't see why, and I, and I, and not put words in your mouth, but, but I would love to explore this just as a thought. I don't think we're gonna solve this tonight. I think that we've got time, but I don't see why. Or, or at least, I believe an optional ought to be, it's leaving the current structure in place, and only using a quasi-board to manage what would be part of that, of the new conglomeration of which
Yeah.
And, and not do
System.
Of that new system, and, and not to mess up with the current management, not to mess up the current funding, only to have a quasi-board of whatever that structure looked like to manage the new growth
Yeah.
Of that. And, and so that way, that's not a disruption of our services, our funding, our autonomy, or anything.
And, Mr. Chair, as I said, these were some of the concerns that was brought out, um, as I spoke to them, um, even as I spoke to Natasha and Ms. Tony. So, these are just some of the concerns that, not that they didn't wanna, or we didn't wanna move forth, it was just the concerns that they had to iron out these before they, you know, considered to move forth. So, thank you.
Ms. Couse, what's the saying?
What is it?
Your, your
Oh.
Your emergency doesn't
An emergency on your part does not constitute panic on my part.
[laughing]
But, but if, if, if it could move forward with the idea that, I mean, we're not, we're just, we're, I know we're talking about an intent, and if they have the intent, and if, if we're, um, it's September 30th, and we still haven't figured it out, well, we haven't, we, we're not hurt.
Right.
And I, and if they can go back and stay in their contin- they're in it, if they could stay in it without being hurt
Right.
Then I don't see a problem with having discussions.
Sure.
And, and, but I don't know who's gonna appoint this board.
If we can't figure it out by September 30th, that's a sign.
Yeah.
I would, yeah, I would agree with that.
I agree.
Yeah. So, any questions?
Mr. Chair, I just, I, I, you know, I don't think it needs to be in the form of a motion, but I just ask the county administrator to, to
Yeah, reel it in on this.
Take, take charge and, uh, make it a, make it an item that you report back to us on. Do we anticipate that we will, we will vote on something on the 24th?
The resolution of intent, potentially. So, that's what I would, today, sitting here today, that's what I would propose to bring back to you on the 24th.
Okay, all right.
Unless something changes, we get, you know, some other information that
Sure.
If you had to present it to me today, knowing all the facts that I have right now, I would probably vote in favor of it, knowing that we have the ability to opt out in the, in the 11th hour. And so, there's just, you know, just so y'all know where I'm kinda out on it, because I think, I think there's gonna be protections that we can build into the agreement. I just wanna see what the agreement is before I, I finally say yes or no.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the information as well. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Emblech.
Good evening, Commissioners. And Commissioner Turner, I heard you say this was gonna be the quickest meeting, and you were gonna make it, so
Uh-huh, yep. Thirty minutes ago.
Just wanted to bring that back up. Um, and, uh, I appreciate your thought on that. Uh, this agenda item is, it's a staff report looking for, um, uh, board direction on, uh, staff going forward with, uh, working on these various land development code amendments. And, um, I'm happy to go through them one by one, or take your questions on them. Uh, but I did also want to, just to give you an update, our, on our current planning projects, our Montura Ranch Estates land use study. Um, we're, we've had our third meeting, and our, at our last meeting, if you didn't know, we had over a hundred and fifty attendees at the meeting, and had some great input. And, um, I'm hoping that that continues on through the, the remainder of this study. Uh, we will have two more community meetings, and then we will be working into the public hearing process for any amendments that result, um, from that land use study. The, um, the other item that, that we'll be presenting to you all in, um, April is a, a comp plan amendment for the Southwest Hendry Sector Plan, uh, where we're, uh, amending that to allow single-family without a detailed specific area plan. And this is, this is based on the fact that the, the, uh, build-out of this sector plan is a fifty-year planning horizon. Um, and, uh, we've not had any development to date. It was adopted in 2014, and we didn't want to hinder any of the property owners from, uh, being able to, um, build a, a, a new residence, um, or split out, you know, a five-acre parcel for one of their family members. Um, the original, the existing language would not allow that. And because it's taking, because it's such a long-term, um, project, um, or planning horizon for this sector plan, uh, we felt like it was necessary to, um, process this. And I've had conversations with, um, the DEO, and they are supportive of it, so it, it should be a relatively easy amendment. But that'll be brought to you in, in, in April, as I mentioned. I was talking about the, I have on here about future planning projects. Um, I have the Pioneer Community Plan. Uh, the plan for that would be for us to start up in the fall, like we started, um, Montura's was started, I think it was in November, uh, but we'd likely probably look at October for, um, the Pioneer Community Plan to start our, our initial meetings and, and, um, from that, um, you know, proceed as we have with Montura and how we did with Wheeler Estates. We also have, uh, for future planning projects, um, and this is a, this is a big effort, and that is to update our comprehensive plan, future land use categories, because quite honestly, they're, they're quite antiquated, and they're, um, they're, the current market and proposed development that, that we're seeing don't quite fit in some of these future land use categories. And it's making it a little more difficult for us to, um, you know, to shoehorn something into a future land use category. And so, I feel like if we go ahead and update those, and, uh, approach them a little differently than we have without losing the, the history we have on, um, some of these, um, future land use categories on our map. The, um, then that, coming back to the, um, projects that we're proposing to complete in the 2020, 2021 fiscal year, some of these items have been on our list for quite a while. We just haven't gotten to them. Uh, but again, if you want me to go through this list of, well, we have thirteen of them, I'd be happy to, or again, I'd just be open for questions.
I don't need to go through all thirteen, but I would like to say something, or at least get your input, and the board's input on one of them in particular.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I believe that probably one thing that we all can agree on, that, that we, some of the things we love about Hendry County is the, is the beauty of the nature that we have. We have beautiful farms, we have beautiful ranches, um, beautiful lakes, some river, um, uh, some, some green natural land, some woods. And, and as we, and I don't, I don't wanna call any communities out, but as we begin a potential, one of the highest potential growth corridors in the nation over the next handful of years is the goal. growth corridors in the nation over the next handful of years is the goal, um, as we think about where we live and what we love, protecting what we can with regards to that beauty, I think ought to be one of our number one priorities. And so if you look at number seven, it jumps out at me off the page. I absolutely love that, and when we talk about the building heights, um, I believe that all that needs, oh, a lot of things on here play into that, obviously, but number seven plays exactly into making sure that we protect, rather than putting 4,000 people shoulder to shoulder, you know, if we can be smart about how we grow and how we build things and go third or fourth floor-
Go vertical, yeah.
Then, then, you know, that, that, every time we do that, we're protecting more green space within Henry County somewhere. So, I really like that idea, and I, and I would love to see that explored and, and brought forth and, and somehow incentivized to those that want to come in and build.
Right. So, and, and you, you've really hit the, the point of, of, or one of the points with, with this, uh, going up in, in, in height, and that is that what you require is the higher you go up, the more green space you have to preserve around you, and, and creating separations and creating green space. Um, that's something that's a, it's, it's a planning standard. So, I appreciate that comment.
Awesome.
What about number six? Off-street parking?
Yes. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Parker can attest to this. We have, we struggle with our, uh, you don't have to-
She said you can.
I'm just saying that. Uh, we struggle with our current, um, table that we have on parking requirements. It's, it needs to be updated, so that, again, we need to bring it up to meet, uh, you know, our future development, um, pressures that we have on different types of uses.
About number eight? Can you explain that a little more?
That's regarding accessory uses and structures. Um, typically, uh, accessory uses, um, and structures have a different setback requirement, um, and, um, and, and with that, um, you would, typically you see that you, if you have a, I'm going to use a Ted shed or a swimming pool, um, you're allowed to go closer to one of your property lines than your 40 feet in the, uh, or 25 feet or what have you, but we would come up with an appropriate setback that still is not encroaching into the adjacent properties, um, you know, into their, or impacting, you know, their area, but there's, um, but there's, that is a typical planning standard as well, is to have accessory structures and, and such that are, um, have a, uh, narrower setback requirement. Um, and, and with, like, a small lot, for example, in Port LaBelle, when somebody wants to put a pool in, uh, we've seen some variances that have had to come forward because of, uh, the size of the lot and the fact that, you know, they wanted to be able to put the pool in the back, and there just wasn't quite enough room to fit everything.
Then when, when they put the shed, is it 15 feet off the line?
Well, we'll come up with a recommendation, but 15 feet i- is a possibility. I mean, that's currently, some of our current setbacks are 15 feet, but-
Because seeing me like that's too, too much.
I, I agree with you, but we'll come up with some recommendations that we'll present and get your all input on it.
See, number nine is me and Mitch's district. Can you go over what you're thinking about on the semi-trail?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't be selfish on this one. Everybody has this issue.
We all on it.
That's one of the worst meetings I've ever been in in my life. First meeting is the county commissioner, and y'all threw me in that. About Case and Evans Road, about the commercial vehicles. I'm like, Lord Jesus, here we go.
And it still hasn't stopped.
And it still hasn't changed.
Yes.
Preacher said, "Lord Jesus."
Yes, right.
Been there, you'd have been praying too, brother.
It wasn't, it wasn't our board meeting, it was one of y'all's community meetings.
Community meeting.
Oh, that one.
Let me go.
Oh, that was at the church?
No, that was at the Dallas Townsend Building.
Oh, that one. Hmm, yeah. Love our community meetings, so-
So, this, this is going to be a, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of going to be a little tough one, because, like we talked about before, we got to be careful with that, because the commercial trucks could be, you know, again, could be someone's utility truck they park at the house because they work for Quadi Electric.
Right.
Could be someone, and we just got to be careful with, the commercial stamp, we got to be careful with that, because-
Understood, and that's-
I get the semis, I see that, that's good.
Yes, and I think that our focus is semis, and I'll tell you that, uh, you know, like the issue that we're having, I think, is it, um, a mid-state loop?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, where they're parking the, um, and tearing, parking a semi tractor trailer in a, um, on a lot that is, uh, like a, a third of an acre, and-
And, and they're parking on the easement as you enter in, destroying the shoulder.
Right, and so, so, so the idea is, is that what size lot is appropriate to be able to park that type of vehicle? Also, what, um, for lack of a better way to explain it, what type of a road? So, mid-state loop, we, may, let's just say, was only built to a certain, um, capacity of being able to handle-
It's not going to handle a 79,000-pound truck.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So, there, there are regular-
Or Shane, or, you know, Joshua, all of those, and, and, and yet you see it all the time, and so, I, I think we all hear you loud and clear on that, Ms. Embly, and my question to you would be, you have this in here for us to address it, but what, what, you know, give me the utopian situation for you right now.
Uh, it would be for us to determine what roads would be appropriate, um, or neighborhoods, neighborhood roads, and I'm, I'm looking at, at like mid-state loop as an example. I mean, that, when you look at a, um, a, a development that is, it was a mobile home development.
Yes.
And, um, you know, something like that was not built for heavy commercial trucks.
Yep.
And I, I will need engineering assistance on, um, you know, determining what, um, you know, how much a, a road can really, um, hold, uh, as far as the weight, but, um, there are, there's, there are other jurisdictions, and we've already looked at them, that have addressed, um, trucks, um, by weight on certain roads. Did I say that right?
Yeah, but, but the, the, I would say, like, the problem to that, though, I don't think comes down to us, it comes down to enforcement. And then, what you heard, I, I think right out of the gate, I don't think it was you, Commissioner Wills, that said, you know, "We have to be sensitive to, there's a utility truck there that's from Quadi Electric." Okay, that's one thing, but what about if it's the, the sod truck that is loaded down on, on Joshua or Shane, that is clearly, you know, destroying that road, it's not, it's not what that road was designed to do. It doesn't take an engineering degree to understand that.
Right.
And it's on the shoulder, and it's there repeatedly, loaded or unloaded, time and time again. Where do you, how do we find the happy medium of, this is just, this is John or Jane Q trying to get ahead, this is John and Jane Q destroying infrastructure? How do you balance that?
Well, I, I, first of all, they're not supposed to be parking on the right-of-way, and I know that they keep going back to it, even if we, you know, cite them for it, um-
Who cites them, Ms. Embly?
Um, well, it's, if it's in the right-of-way or on the right-of-way, it's the Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
And, um, and in different, other situations, it would be code enforcement, but-
Yes, ma'am.
The right-of-way, it's, it's, we work with the Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
Anyway, so, it's, what we want to do is to avoid that, okay, and, and put, we can put on, uh, certain streets that there's a weight limit. That's the best you can do, and then if somebody complains, just like with code enforcement, that somebody's driving this, the sod truck on here, you know, every day and parking in their driveway, that's not allowed, and, and getting to the driveway part or the parcel parking is, what I'd be looking at is that if you have, um, that you would have to have a certain-sized lot in order to have a semi tractor trailer parked on it. It's got to, it's got to fit.
But what if the roadway doesn't support it anyway?
And, and-
The roadway going to it doesn't support that.
But that's the other part of it, is, is that if we have a weight limit on some of these roads, I mean, that's a big endeavor for us to determine a lot of this, and I'm going to say that it's going to be easier for me to come up with, uh, a minimum lot size, but then when it comes to the weight limit, we're going to have to spend some time on, on a little more research and then signage for it, um, and then we're going to go to enforcement. I mean, it's just like everything else. I mean, how, we only have so much enforcement power, but you have to have something on the book to enforce.
Then you're going to get to the situation where you got to grandfather law them roads in.
Yeah, because they, they've been there 30, 40 years.
I don't see how you can.
Well, you're going to have to.
A weight limit's a weight limit.
Well, the weight, the weight of the road I live on has two packing houses. It's a residential road. When we built it, it was a residential road. Hauled the rock from Pioneer there. It was a residential road. There's two packing houses. Semis run down that road all day, every day.
Mm-hmm.
We did finally get them slowed down with a, a little bit of help, so, uh, they're, they've decided now they're going to go around the speed bumps. So, they're eating the shoulder of the road off instead of only half the truck getting the speed bump, but, again, how are you going to tell someone that's had a business there for, you know, 15 years?
Yeah.
"Sorry, you can't drive your trucks down here no more," so it's going to be, it's going to be a little tougher, like you said, I mean-
Right, well, and-
Right, that's what I'm saying, there's some roads you're going to have to, we may have to improve the roads, but still.
Agreed.
It's going to be a, you, you got a, you got a tough task.
Mm-hmm.
Shane can do it.
Yes, he can.
Isn't it still one, Marg- isn't it still one semi per driveway?
It's one commercial truck.
That's parked, though.
Yeah, like a dump truck or a semi.
Yeah.
Can park in the driveway?
Yes, that's commer- yes, that's right now.
Or a service truck, you know, three-quarter ton with a utility body, or a van, or a wrecker, or anything like that, right?
Well, not a van, but there, there's a certain threshold, and I don't have that with me, but-
So, it's a, it's a physical threshold, it's not just the appearance?
Right.
That's what I want to be careful with. I don't want to become Kate Corle.
Yeah, no, I understand, or you don't want to be an HOA Nazi, exactly.
I don't want to live in HOA.
Yeah.
I'm just, again, we just got to be really careful with this.
Yes, sir.
I mean, a van, most electricians are plumbers, that's what they use. They use, they use the cargo vans.
I, I wouldn't even think about restricting something like that.
You just said vans.
No, I said not vans. He said vans.
Okay.
All right, listen up.
But that's where, that's where I was, I was wanting to know.
Listen, Linda, okay.
If there's, so-
I just want to make sure we're getting all the, well, there's going to be a, you know, be a room full of conversation when we start this, I just want to make sure we're bringing it all out.
Well, and, and that's why I, I want to focus on the semi tractor trailers and the like, similar things like that. I don't, it's not the, you know, the, the duels and the vans and the this and the that, and, you know, the typical trucks that folks use for either personal or work.
Right.
Because you go down 80, and there'll be four in one driveway, semi trucks.
That's nothing compared to Case Road.
Yeah, Case Road and Evans, tripled. Okay, Kate, how about number 11?
We just need to go through all of them ourselves.
Yeah, we about have. I think this is all of them.
We're getting pretty close.
Okay, um, it's, it's regarding creating locational standards for commercial, industrial, religious facilities and basically large, uh, assembly-type facilities, entertainment facilities, and, you know, you, you want to make sure that, um, these types of uses are located, um, off a road that can handle its traffic, and that, um, in, in some instances, you can require, and I'm not saying this is what we're going to do, but this is something to consider, that, that certain uses have to be at an intersection of two roads that are improved, and, because you don't want a large-scale, uh, commercial or any one of these types of uses, um, on, uh, on a dirt road that's surrounded by residential.
Right.
That's kind of my main goal, is to get away from that type of scenario.
Okay, number 12.
Do we have a bingo?
Let her away, come on.
Um, this is regarding, uh, regulations for land clearing. It's not associated with commercial agriculture, but I had brought this up before, and it's the idea of, we have folks that are completely clear-cutting, um, all of the trees off of their property, um, so it's raw dirt that's left, and, um, you have potential impacts to your drainage facilities, where, when it rains, that the dirt runs off into the, um, drainage ditches and clogs them up, or your culvert that's under your, your driveway. Um, and the other part of this is, is, you know, we need to look at protecting our native trees, so, but the, but the bottom line is, is we don't want to, as I have on here, unduly impact the ability to develop what the, what's proposed. Um, and one of the items that's on this as well, that the LPA brought up, was a great one, that we need to require the removal of all invasive exotic, um, vegetation on parcels when they come in for a permit.
So, when they come in for a permit, you'd go over all this with them?
Yes, sir.
Right now, you don't?
Correct.
Okay.
We do require a, a clearing, uh, permit, um, in, um, for properties that come in for a permit and they want to clear it, but usually what happens is they clear it and then come in, and it's too late.
They, they clear it? So, so wait a second. So, this leads into another conversation. I'm glad, I'm glad this got brought up this way. Um, I've had a handful of calls. I guess in Henry County, we, you, in an effort to clear land, you have to pull a permit, or you have to have a license? Is, is that correct? A person cannot own a skid steer with a mulch blade, unload it from a trailer, go out there and start clearing dirt because they've been hired by a contractor to make, they've been hired by an owner to make the, the land clean. Is that correct or incorrect? Do you understand the question?
Yeah, I do, but, uh, that, that's incorrect. I, it, it's, I'm, I'd have to know the exact scenario that you're talking about.
Okay, John Smith, a fictitious character, owns a skid steer with a mulch blade on it, and he's been hired by the Howard Hill Foundation to go out and clear a lot in Montura, Flag Hole, and Hookers Point, and Harlem, four lots.
Right.
They're going to pay him $500 apiece, he's going to make $2,000 today.
Right.
I can't even move my equipment to one of those places for that number, but he has one piece of equipment and a little truck that's very fuel-efficient, he has no licenses whatsoever. Is he allowed to go and do that?
Oh, uh, all contractors have to be licensed.
He's not a contractor.
Well, he's-
He's been hired to go clear land.
He's doing the same thing a contractor does.
Is he? Is he building a structure?
No, I mean, clearing land.
So, there's land-clearing contractors?
I'm not sure.
I'm not, I'm not being argumentative. I'm giving you a scenario that I've not only manifested in my head, but I've been presented with-
Sure.
And there's some people that are upset because they said, "Hey, we're trying to get ahead. We've, we've purchased equipment, we're trying to do things."
Right.
"But I'm not going vertical with a structure, so why do I have to have a GC license?"
Right.
And so my presentation back was, "Do you have to have a GC license?" And they, they said, "No, it's not necessarily a GC license, it's another license."
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that tonight.
Okay.
Uh, but I will find out, and-
Could, could we look into that? And then-
Sure.
One other question I'd like to know is, can we also know what our neighboring counties require, from Palm Beach County up to the heartland? Because, um, I, I don't, I don't want to see our people losing out, and, and I mean, guys, I'm not trying to create an unfair playing field, but I don't think that Ridgell and son is really going out trying to clean quarter-acre lots, you know, and, and yet I will tell you this, I'm so tickled to see this, because I've seen so many large old trees felled as of late, and there's no reason, they're, they're not going to affect anything. Actually, they would keep the value of the property up, so, you know, that's one and the same.
I, we can easily provide that information.
Okay.
I think it would be-
Has anybody else had this scenario presented to them? No?
I know a lot of guys do what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I've cleared lots of acres, and I have no kind of license.
You, you see?
That's what I was saying, I don't think-
That's, that's, and so, so I don't know, I don't know, but I've, I've had people, I've had, I've had at least three contractors talk to me about this, and they're frustrated.
Yeah, well, we'll have to nail down the exact scenarios on this, because usually it, it, it has to be related to something that's required to have a permit and a license.
Gotcha.
So, um, and we're not talking about ag operations here.
No, ma'am. These are, these are definitely residential, you know, RR or, or, you know, uh-
Mark?
We do have a lot of specialty licenses. The county has the code with a whole, with 41 specialty licenses that are not general contractor licenses.
Yeah.
And so, one of them is excavation contractor, which is described to be excavate and remove materials such as rock, gravel, and sand to construct canals, lakes, and levees, clearing land or surface debris and vegetation, grubbing of roots, removal of debris, and leveling of the land surface incidental to excavation.
Is that a, Mark, I'm not, I'm, is that a state of Florida also?
No, it's Henry County.
Why does Henry County do that? Why, why do we want to play God that way?
It might just be, uh, similar to other jurisdictions that have that. It, I, I can't imagine us-
Interesting. I look forward to what you bring back.
I just, a lot of what's in the code was, was-
Here.
Pirated from another jurisdiction.
Might have been older, too. Probably need to revisit quite a bit of that.
I'd like, I'd like to see that, because if we're, it sounds like, Ms. Embly, we could be just creating more work for staff that doesn't necessarily have to occur.
We certainly don't want to do that.
Yep, hers. I mean, why have an arbitrary rule on the books just to have an arbitrary rule? I guess is what I'm saying, so.
You got to have, you got to have a license to mow yards.
Yeah, yeah.
So, took me out of my business.
You're not joking right now?
I am joking.
Okay.
But you have to have a license to mow yard.
You are being serious.
I'm being serious, you have to have a license to mow yards.
Well, how licensed is that?
They, they all, you, every contractor you see, they complain, because this kid was down there mowing the lot down the road there, and he doesn't have a license.
I'm going to complain, because, because-
That's what they complain about.
There's a cat that's, that's working out of a Ford Ranger with an aluminum ladder that's doing electrical work, and he never gets a service called in. I guarantee you, his inspection doesn't get failed. Quadi Electric's, by the way, we were guilty, we did some bad stuff on, on a trailer install. It was embarrassing what my men did, and, um, and, you know, I was tickled with what code enforcement, or what building in, in, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
The department that oversees that, they came in, they looked at it, they said, "No, this is terrible," and, uh, and they were right, but the gist of what I'm saying is, is, I didn't, I didn't know that, so I do think that we need to look at that occupational license list. We ought to, we ought to visit that, so.
Yeah, that's a good, a good conversation. So, did we miss any you want to go over?
You mean, Mr. Harrison?
Did I want to go over?
I was just checking, I think we got all the rest of them.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Embly.
Last, last little thing I would just add is, is any, anytime we could get the overlay showing our infrastructure, y'all sent a couple of them out, and those were so, those were so good, and I'd just love to see those as it applies, and then I don't know if y'all have the ability to do the breakdown to community-wide or anything like that, and I'm not necessarily saying that, necessarily requesting that, I'm just saying, I want to see how that all plays out, to know where infrastructure exists-
Yeah.
And where we need to work towards, really specifically, sewer, Hookers Point, or lack thereof, but where the lines come to, and then Banyan Village coming out of, uh, LaBelle, Port LaBelle, and going, uh-
You have sewer there, but no water yet.
Right, well, the GIS map allows you to-
We actually have water and no sewer. Tough guy.
I think they have water, but no sewer.
Okay.
It runs all the way to Banyan, but it doesn't. It runs to two Banyan Villages down.
Yep.
It hasn't been supplied throughout Banyan Village.
Yes, sir.
But that, that's been quite a few years ago.
They can shoot it.
Yep.
That's, that's gonna be a good topic to be honest with you. I'm dealing with that disorder right now.
Needs to be our next focus.
One of the facilities we're looking at to, to, to build, do a build out on, one of the biggest things there is lack of water. No city water, no county water. Right at the edge of the city, right at the edge of the county. And they're talking, you know, you're looking at maybe $500,000 for a water storage tank, storage tank in case there's a fire so you can run your fire pump. So.
The city won't annex?
There's no city water there. City and county both. Right where it meets at 40th Drive, there's no city water, no county water.
So the city hadn't wet the, what about Port LaBelle?
They haven't either.
Cause they come out to the college.
But when you talk about building, that's gonna be some of the big, big questions, you know, infrastructure we're gonna ask about.
But hold on. So, so visit with me on this. So we're 40th Drive. So I'm on 80. I take a left on 40th Drive and I'm heading south.
Just, just after you cross the 40th Drive, when you go, just as you passed it, you're coming into the city limits of LaBelle.
Oh.
There is no water there.
It doesn't go to the college?
That, the county was on the other end maybe, but it does not come up to the north end of 40.
So it's on the north end.
It's that big building when you drive in the town there.
This is precisely, this is precisely what I'm talking about in the overlay, to have a bigger picture conversation so that, you know, guys, we were, we were more successful. If we don't get a single thing from line item appropriation, which we're in the budget on both sides. But if we don't get a single thing, we've been more successful in Tallahassee this year than we've ever been in the history. And I think it's because of some of the pieces that we have in this room right now that are talking with Tallahassee and the connections that we've made. Now, there may be some changes, obviously with any administration. But I just think that we need to be, we need to be proactive on those conversations and we need to know. And where there's those little gaps, it's no different than what you're gonna hear me challenging Shane on as it relates to, you know, there's small gaps in Pioneer where we have Marle up to here, a 800, you know, a 150 yard gap and then Marle down there. I don't understand what happened, but you know, we need to, we need to find a way to fix that. And I think that if we have that anywhere throughout the county, we owe that to our constituents, no matter whose district it is, to kind of make those infrastructure improvements occur.
The biggest thing on the west side is water and sewer.
Yes, sir. Being the preventer from, from development occurring. Yes, sir.
They don't want to spend all that money.
No, they don't.
Old business?
Just, uh, just, you know, I have, I have eight items and we don't even need to visit on them, but the code enforcement Rodriguez case, just a quick update on that.
Yeah, court hearing Thursday this week to ask for an order to, an order to show cause why she should not be found in contempt of court for not, for not addressing the cleanup that was ordered.
And she didn't do a thing.
Say that again, Ms. Harris?
She didn't do nothing.
Nothing, okay.
Didn't do anything.
We're, uh, we're what, 14 months into this since we've tried it?
Several years.
Tried it? The trial was in January.
Of?
This, this year. The trial was in January. It was two months ago, but.
It started in February last year, having a discussion here.
Yep.
But that's been going on.
We got a judgment. We got a final judgment. That's usually the thing you want to get out of a court case is a final judgment in your favor, and we have that. Now it's a matter of compelling her, you know, she's not, she's not disobeying us. She's anticipating the judge.
Yep.
That's different.
So what's our fix? What's our remedy? The eyes of Hendry County are a watching.
Have the judge find her in contempt of court.
Okay. Judge on an election cycle.
When does that go?
Thursday. Well, the, the, there is a hearing Thursday. He's not gonna find her in contempt then. He's gonna issue the order that would schedule the hearing to find her in contempt. It's a multi-step, multi-step process for contempt because they don't want people going to jail for, on a whim. I mean, it's gotta be well, so it'll be due process for it.
We, we've had people beg or, you know, we'll clean it up for nothing. And, nope. She's got two big old dogs back there to get you.
Uh, my next item was just a flagpole update.
Do you have Randy, any additional information on the flagpole?
If you would, come on up, sir.
I think you say flag hole every time. I'm like, what happened to flag hole? That's twice now with that.
Thank you, Randy Martin, City of Cloiston City Manager. Thank you for the opportunity. We've been working with DOT representatives to go through the process. I'm in the process of filing all the necessary things, but I need to follow up. You had mentioned to me something, a potential resource for an engineer. I'm at that stage.
Wonderful.
Ready to move to that stage to submit the preliminary documents.
Wonderful. If you shoot me and the county administrator a message, we will, we will forward that up to, to the engineer that's gonna work with us. I'd also like to let y'all know that it's, to be anonymous right now, but it's gonna be announced who it is, I think, within the next month. But we just received another $5,000 donation as it relates to this. So.
Flagpole.
Yes, sir. So, so I think with that, plus I think the fair is like right at, I'm gonna call it 6,000. And then I don't know what we've contributed. I don't think we've done anything thus far. And I don't, but I mean, we're, we're, we're gonna be all over this thing. It's not gonna be a hard reach for us to make this happen. So.
I did bring it up as I mentioned to you two in previous correspondence to our Board of Commissioners at our work session recently on the 27th quarter, and it was well received and no adverse comments.
Wonderful. Awesome. Thank you so much, Mr. Martin.
I had a, one other update if I could give it.
Yes, sir.
I, I know it's out of order, but I apologize for that. I think you'll understand why I want to tell you. I do want to apologize for being late to the meeting and the discussion on libraries. I have submitted some documentation to your county administrator with some, what I believe, key principles that was referenced earlier that I hope will be critical to our discussions and, and, and your administrator's been very supportive and we work well together. And I'll commit my efforts to work with her to try to make this happen in a timely manner as you deem appropriate. What I did want to share is the reason I was late, because it, it, it obviously is impactful to the community. And it's relative to the Sugar Festival. City officials are, this is a statement that we've just released on social media, are aware of the latest information on the new cases of COVID-19 in Florida, and particularly South Florida, and guidance contained in the Governor's Executive Order 2051 initially, and the most recent one, 2052, declaring a state of emergency, and specifically the CDC guidelines for mass gatherings. In consideration of this information and on behalf of the city, festival organizers have been advised to cancel any upcoming large community events. Although there are no known cases in the county, to our knowledge, local officials are working with public health officials to assess information as it is provided to us. The reality is, any COVID-19 outbreak would stress available local resources and limitations within the community. And it is a risk deemed too high to take allowing public mass gatherings with thousands of individuals located in a specific defined, defined area. This action is taken with deep regret and city officials offer apologies for any inconvenience this may cause, but the city must in an abundance of caution, take whatever prudent action is necessary to ensure the health, safety and welfare of this community. I wanted to formally present that to county officials before making it public, but the timing didn't allow as the festival organizers had to make a statement and they'll be issuing their own statement this evening. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
So the gist is Sugar Festival is not occurring?
That is what they'll be announcing as much as.
I know that's, I know that's painful, but I, you know, I think at the end of the day, if we don't protect our citizens in every way possible, then that's a disservice. So as much as we all hate to see it, I applaud the bold method and bold step that that is.
No doubt.
Hopefully we can reschedule.
2021. Library agreement was one of my items, so I'm so glad that we had that. Curtains for the Civic Center in Harlem.
Yes, it's been ordered.
Yep.
Uh, they're being made and it's the end of May is the estimated delivery date.
End of May.
End of May.
Nice.
End of May.
Installation.
Installation at the end of May. They just, they don't want to give a specific deadline, but.
Is that in town for brown sugar?
No. If there be a brown sugar with everything.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Just have to wait and fill our way.
There's, there's a lot of serious conversations going on about stuff being canceled. The RFP for insurance for, for the services we're gonna have, are you meeting, are, are, are you talking with Allbritton? Are they gonna be helping to design? What are, what are your thoughts on that?
I haven't, no, I haven't talked to them. Ian, our OMB Director and Adelia, our HR Director are working on the actual document. They've got some sample documents from some other counties of what that might look like and they're preparing a scope. I believe it'll be ready either later this week or early next week. And we'll issue it and advertise it. But no, I haven't, I haven't spoken to Allbritton about it yet. We're waiting till we get the document and get it ready.
The public transportation, as we're, does that's coming online?
For.
Hendry County, what we're gonna, like, what, what are you thinking we're gonna be doing?
For transportation disadvantage. So we're working on rescheduling a transportation workshop. Of course, we, we had it on the books and we've moved it under the circumstances of what everything was going on. We've been working and with FDOT and MV currently, and they're still in a transition period as far as trying to pick up the, the trips, if you will, for our constituents for Hendry and Glades County. So that's still in progress. At the workshop, what I'd like for us to discuss is what we all and what the community with their input of what they would like to see going forward. So when we take over in July, what that looks like. I'd also like for everyone to think about a branding concept and come up. And we just, we're brainstorming different ideas and maybe engaging the schools and having like a competition, maybe even in the school systems as well.
Oh, we gotta have Tiger Express, Sweet Town Express, Cowboy Carrier.
Some names and some branding, for example, of what that might look like. But it'd be like, it's Hendry and Glades, you know, as, as a whole.
Terrier. We ain't doing nothing for the terriers.
But I think that, and something even previous to all these issues that we've had with Goodwills and, and what's happened. In many conversations for many years, a lot of different folks have commented on, even with Goodwills, that there's a branding, there was a branding issue for transportation services in our area. And so that, that just kept getting echoed over and over and over again. And so I think that it's really important, that's just one component of different things that we'll be talking about. But it just, if it can, if you can all be thinking about it and if you have different ideas of how you might want that to look, I think it's a really important component that we need to talk about at that transportation workshop as well as interior through the City of Cloiston, City of LaBelle routes that are consistent and having stops within our community as a whole. As well as, you know, they, they go to door to door for folks that qualify for transportation for medical and, and different needs. And so.
Ms. Davis, what you're saying though is that would be a separate vehicle unto itself, right? Like you would have a set route and then you would have a separate vehicle that does that door to door service also.
Almost like the Clube.
Because not everybody can get to those routes.
Yes.
And so that's the whole point. You know, there's a lot of people that could, that do, are not able, physically able to get to a route, but.
And I just, I want to know what a lot is. Is a lot seven or is a lot 70 or is a lot 700?
Well, by the time we have the workshop and that's what, and that's why I wanted to postpone it.
Yeah.
Because we've never really been able, in my opinion, we've asked those questions.
Yeah, well, Goodwills had 3,987 people that rode every day.
Yeah.
And they scored out 100%. They loved the service.
There was two on the bus every time.
They never had more than two on a bus ever, including the driver. But yeah, they had a ton of people that rode on paper and they loved the service. But every human that I talked to or got accosted by in B-Ford Brady's hated Goodwills and told me I sucked as a commissioner because of Goodwills. So I don't know where the, I don't know where this connect occurred, but it was somewhere.
We can't wait too long because July will be here before you know it, but I did want to give it a little bit more time. So as every day goes by, we're gonna have better information from MV, from a ridership perspective of what the true need is. And with that information, we'll be able to make better decisions.
We want to make sure we get true numbers.
Right.
Do they have any vans or is it all buses?
Both. It's both. Well, I saw vans.
I see just MV vans mostly.
I saw buses and vans in your yard.
Carrying a van.
Buses and vans.
Right. There, there's both. I've seen both.
Was your question, Goodwills have vans or?
The new company.
I think, I, I see mostly vans by MV, but I know they have both as well.
Cause if you got five people, you don't need a bus.
I just hope, I just hope that, and I don't think it'll occur, but I hope with a little bit of branding and some set routes and stuff like that, we're gonna be overwhelmed. I don't think it'll occur, but I, man, I hope that's a problem that we have to try to figure out. Cause DOT has said that they'll help us find dollars and cents. So I'm glad to hear. Do you have any idea of when your date will be for the workshop?
I don't know. Do we have, we, we're working on setting different workshop dates.
All right.
We'll send it out to you.
Yes, ma'am. Shane, I got yelled at last night by, by Santa Claus in Pioneer. Cause I'm doing a bad job because Marco in Naples, Pioneer 10th, somewhere in there, a garbage truck turns around and it's, it's destroying a road that has never been, never had moral put on it. So I don't, I don't know. We just, we need to reference that if we could. And then I just wanted to ask you again, but I know I talked to you earlier about it, the, the maps for Pioneer. I'm looking forward to getting those as big as you'll allow me to have, but within reason. I mean, if they're that big, it would be incredible. And then last thing is Shane on the Helms Road extension, you sent us pictures of stuff being delivered. What timeframe still?
He's got bad news.
I don't really have any news yet. I was waiting, I was hoping to have a timeline Monday because they had a pre-construction meeting. They're waiting on feedback from their cabinets, the metal cabinets for the signals, and I don't have an exact date yet.
Tell them about the poles.
Well, we got the poles. One of them had to go back because it was cracked. So, but it's coming when they do the signal. So it's fine.
Oh, good. Be ready by May.
Contract time is up April 28th, so.
So you think by May we'll have, we'll have that road open?
Yes, sir.
That's pretty dead gum good considering.
You got that on.
Go to the table.
Is that on record?
Mark? Recording it?
I like it. It was April. Now we're in May, so.
It's okay.
Might be June or July.
It's a heck of a lot.
How, how old will it be at that point?
Shane don't ever tell a lie either.
Oh, no. Well, that's it, Mr. Commissioner. Thank you so much, sir.
Oh, we're not done, are we?
I don't want to business by district.
Well, I thought we still had.
We're gonna get the public, yeah. That's all that's left is public comments.
No, no, Shane, Shane, do you not have?
Shane.
Okay, Chairman, this was a walk-on staff report for the last topic about Goodwills. The Transportation Disadvantaged Commission has five vehicles that are titled in Goodwills names. They want those transferred to us now. They don't want to wait till July.
Motion to accept.
And I need to make sure that includes authorization of purchasing two new wheelchair accessible vehicles. We have to pay upfront with county transportation tax fund dollars and once they're received, then we can go ahead and seek reimbursement from the state. I'll say, I'll say.
Say, okay, for discussion.
Yeah, I have a little discussion also.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna let my man go first.
We got a motion back, Mr. Chair, second back, Mr. Swindle, and we have discussion.
Can I, I was trying to look for the exact sentence, but this is Hendry Glades, right?
Yes.
Where is the Glades? So we are fronting the money or is Glades also pulling up? We're fronting the money. Glades? Henry Glades?
Cause we're the.
They get this much. We're, we're, we're the community transportation coordinator.
Right.
So we are actually the recipient of the largest funding source from FDOT in those, in those dollars and cents. Glades County doesn't, doesn't, I think, I could be wrong, Commissioner, and they can, they can vet it for you better, but I believe they don't even qualify with some of the dollars and cents. But I have another question.
We have sufficient funding to cover that and it's, it's fully reimbursed 100%. We just got to float it for a few months and get reimbursed. It's not a problem. We float a lot of grants. Okay. Understood. Thank you.
And it's, and it, it's the, it's not the TDC technically. It's, it's Transportation Disadvantaged Coordinator. It's not the, the TD, the acronym is.
I noticed that as well, yes. Which one come up?
On the second page.
Not the tour resume, Sam.
Do you understand what I'm talking about?
They're trying to say transportation disadvantage. I think that's what they're trying to say. In this one, we're calling it Transportation Disadvantaged Commission.
That's what I, okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure. But that's not my only question though. My, my, my question is, does somebody get out in front of this? You know, this is one of my big complaints all the time. This is 141K. I don't care if it's 100% reimbursable or not. Um, it, it's, it's the definition of governmental waste. Right now we have five vehicles that we're gonna take in, we're gonna get two more. That's gonna be seven total, right? I can see your face already. You're not even saying anything. You're thinking the exact same thing I'm thinking that we have to talk about this.
I've already asked the question. That's why.
Let me, let me help you out some. To be honest, we don't know how many vehicles we're getting.
You see what I mean? But we know we're gonna buy two more.
Well, well, hang on. It's, we thought we had like 17 or 19.
That's what I heard. I heard astronomical figures and we have two people that ride.
Yes. Well.
Including the driver.
I don't think we have that many vehicles.
But we don't need seven.
I don't know.
Until the, until the volume shows that we need seven, y'all, why are we buying two more? Do we have to? Have these already been bought? Have they already been built?
They're not handicapped accessible. The ones we're buying have to be the handicapped accessible.
Right. And then furthermore.
Two new ones and then you can take your oldest.
I'm gonna relax. We'll send them to the Sugar Land Auction, I guess, but the gist is.
I got more to add on that. We don't know that, that, we don't even know the condition really of all the vehicles. We don't know that, we don't even know the condition really of all the vehicles we got. Of the current fleet. There's a lot of them, the ones in our yard now, some of them have issues. We're not sure they all belong to Henry County. Some of them may belong to another county. There's a, there's a lot going on right now in this transition.
But this is what happens, Mr. Chair. This is what happens that makes government inefficient. And it's not your fault, it's not your fault. We've inherited a bad situation, but I don't wanna make a bad situation worse and then have it to where, well, there's just dollars and cents flowing, so we gotta spend them. So I, everything you've said, Shane, is completely logical. I get it. The only thing I ask is that y'all, y'all put the brakes on any new expenditures or there's P.O.s out there, we need to squash them and just let the manufacturers deal with it. And if there's a restocking or get out of jail free cost, then we have to do that, and it's probably gonna be ten cents on the dollar. But that, that's a, you know, I don't, I don't think that we need to increase our fleet, and we don't know what our fleet usage is gonna be. I'm just looking at the way I would operate it in my company. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We got a motion in a second on the floor.
So on the motion, I heard two items that were part of that motion, but it's his staff report for option one has A through D. There's four different components to it, so I wanna be clear, it's all of option one.
Are you good with this?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, there's A through, I'm sorry, there's A through E. There's five components to it.
Okay. Any part of discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Chairman, just one comment to add. From March first to sixth, March first to the sixth, there was a hundred and eight trips altogether in and out of county, but there was only twenty-eight people at all that rode that bus for that week.
Twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight. For, I don't know how many vehicles that was, I don't have that, but there's only twenty-eight riders as of the first week of March, and there was a hundred and eight trips. But that's not, we're not doing the Clu Bell route either, so.
And so we've asked the question, how much if they know and they're still gathered? This is what I wanna, we.
How much would the Clu Bell add?
Well, not just.
What's your question that you asked?
Well, how much of the clients that potentially Goodwills was serving are they not, have they not served yet? And so how many people are now, are still waiting?
No.
And so, but we, that was the question I asked when he brought forward this new, two new vehicles. I said, wait a minute, I, I had the similar conversations, and we've asked those questions, and so we're waiting on that information.
A hundred and eight trips in one week, right? A hundred and eight trips in one week. Do you remember the number was always three thirty-one? It was like three thirty-one a month or something like that? And then it would, and it would be times by four. I remember, I remember these numbers so vividly, cause I served as chair of the C.D.C. or C.T.C. or Transportation Disadvantaged, I don't know what in the heck the acronym was. But the, the, the volume of numbers that they used to share were so disgusting. And, you know, it didn't matter who the director was, Alan Mandell, or I think the guy was Gary Bryant, they were, they were, they'd smile at you, they'd tell you, you're wrong, and, and.
That's how they get, that's how they get paid.
Lord bless them. So the long and the short of it is, is those numbers make so much more sense. A hundred and eight trips, twenty-eight people, I guarantee you, we're getting ballpark, times that by four, you know, that, that's starting to be about right. And that doesn't justify a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars for two vehicles, ever. But, but it justifies an old fifteen passenger van with a handicap accessible thing picking up some people, you know, and one human moving it around. So I'm, I'm interested to see how it's gonna play out. We're gonna fix this issue. I'm so excited about this.
Alright. Anyone in the public like to address the board tonight? If you would, come up, state your name and.
Ralph's already been here.
He's the only get one tonight?
Yeah. Maybe he's leaving.
Ralph Vitale, I think last week's event at Air Glades turned the page, and I think we're gonna have to have some kind of understanding and policy that when families wanna move here, when they're working at their airport, when they're perhaps owners of something, and they're coming up here to look around, the policy of this county should be to roll out the red carpet for anybody who needs a house, wherever sugar's building or whatever they're doing out there, I don't know what it is. But the, the watchword at Air Glades the other day was expedite. This is veg, this is food stuff that cannot afford to be sitting around and to have U.S. Customs coming in with something that really is gonna expedite their part of it. I think that just changed the whole game. But we can't offer the slowest house building in the world either, when they finally get here, because that reputation will get around. So it's, it's, you know, I don't know whether, what you talked about earlier had anything to, no, I didn't hear anything. Faster than that.
Houses are going up quick. Very quick in Port LaBelle for sure. One right on top of the other one, and they are steady building. That's a good thing.
They're getting ready to build more in LaBelle, too.
They are, that project's gonna be rather big over there. Okay. Anyone else in the public like to address the board? This is my district, Mr. Swindle.
I don't disagree with Mr. Vitale. I think that we are in a housing crisis. I don't think we're unique. I think a lot of communities, state and nationwide are, but that's no excuse for us not to be proactive and do everything that we can, so.
I echo your comments, Mr. Vitale. How far off are we from being able to start doing some of the improvement projects where, or with the loan? I know there's big things like the Sheriff's Department, we're waiting on the architect and engineer to charge us zillions of dollars so we can go build a small roof like we should have built to start with. But are we ready to start some of these projects?
You hate engineers.
Oh, God, they're ridiculous.
The historic.
There's only one engineer I lack.
Okay, starting with the courthouse. The courthouse, we issued the notice to proceed for construction on the facade of the historic courthouse. We held off on the roof portion of that task until we get the grant from the state, and then we'll proceed with that, and that's being paid for by the state, of course. The jail contracts, I think we may have got, we got those back for me, right, Mark? Or did we send them to you?
You just sent them today.
Okay, so we got the jail contracts for Mark to review. That was for Parker Mudge Smith, the architect. We've already got the contractor geared up, which is Chris Tell. Cluiston-Suboff contracts, I seen some emails this week, and we've got a meeting scheduled. I don't know the day between Jennifer, myself, the engineer, and Alan Bowen to talk about that project. Cemetery, I've gotta issue the bid. We've got environmental work going on to find out. We just got a draft environmental assessment that I reviewed, I commented on, they're still doing care of care. We know the number of gopher tortoises we're gonna have to relocate. We got that down. Just gonna take care of the cemetery.
Parking lots, any of the, are we still wait, we're gonna wait around like the courthouse parking lot?
Yeah, wait on the parking lots.
And make sure all the construction's done.
Am I missing a building? Nope, I think that's it.
Can I add one building? And I don't think it'll take a lot. And, and I know he would never say a word, and this was not the course, I didn't even ask him, so he ain't mad at me, but I drove through LaBelle last week and I had to go in front of Attorney Lapp's office, and I'm surprised we hadn't gotten code violations there. I mean, like maybe a pressure cleaner, coat of paint, hedge trimmers. And he would never complain, and I'm sure he would never say a word, but I mean, it was a county facility, and I was like, man, that kinda looks dingy there, man. I was almost embarrassed.
I'll ask Alan.
Yeah, if you have to take out part of the loan money to go buy a can of paint, or if you want me to go pressure cleaner, help you boys, whatever, I'll do it.
It's on the record.
I'll do it, I'll do it.
Can you be there tomorrow?
Tomorrow's a little tight, tomorrow's a little tight, but I will.
That's a, that's a maintenance.
But out of all seriousness, I would appreciate if they would look at that. I mean, it is, it just needs a little attention.
They're a little behind, they're.
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah. Okay. The other thing is, and I know most of the county staff, all the county staff knows, but I wanna make sure that I give proper recognition where recognition is due. The county, back in December, entered into an agreement with Title Basin, or was it even, maybe even November, and had a, had a meeting in Title Basin as a company that does procurements and grant writing for multiple things, and, and Henry County made that relationship and brought them to the table. And early December, we had a meeting and they said, there's a workforce development grant that only the workforce development school district can apply for, Henry County cannot. And so from the beginning of December, we started working on it. Really, they started working, and I was supplying some information, some narratives, and so we were kinda jointly working together on the project and.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Is workforce development, that's the Southwest Florida Workforce Development?
No, 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 Henry County Schools Workforce Development.
So the entity that you're in charge of?
Yes.
Had to apply to this grant.
That's correct.
Henry County could not, but Henry County brought this vendor or this entity to you to say, apply for a grant.
They brought them to the, to the table, and they're working on multiple things Henry County-wise, but there was one slither that was workforce development, Henry County Schools specific.
Hundred percent in your wheelhouse.
That's right. And so they, the Title Basin team jumped on it, jumped on it without, without any type of assurance that they would be compensated for it, because their agreement was with Henry County, not Henry County Schools. Still worked very diligently on it, and not quite two weeks ago, the Department of Economic Opportunity through the CDBG awarded Henry County Schools one point four million dollars to do, what we're gonna do is ramp up more workforce development and vocational training programs. Specifically, we're gonna ramp up a diesel technician program. We're working very quickly to, to get it off the, we're already operational with a current one, but we're really gonna ramp it up to where it's gonna be a world-class, producing industry certified, ASE certified, T-two diesel technicians. Today, I'm having conversations with multiple companies here in Cluiston and outside of the walls of Cluiston that are saying, where can we line up and sign up? We're ready to, to help be a part, be the guiding team, and to, and to help support it with, with personnel. So, so it's absolutely appreciative to the county, the county efforts, Ms. Davis and her team, and everyone that, that was a part of that. So our school system was a, was a huge recipient of that.
Does a hundred percent go for that?
Yes, sir.
And then where's the location?
It's gonna be at our current, we already have a diesel technician program up. We're gonna, we're gonna expand it.
Expand it.
Yes, sir.
You gonna expand any of it over to LaBelle anytime soon?
If I, if I have, if I have facilities in demand. And that's what I run into, like the nursing program wanted to expand in LaBelle, we offered it, and I had one person sign up.
We have welders coming, having to get transported over here, so I'm asking about the others.
So I tried to get a welding program there, and I had two sign up for a welding program, so I can't justify a facility with the expense for, you know, such low numbers. And so I have to have a threshold number to make it at least a break even. So it becomes cheaper for us to transport students in it, is to build a facility for small numbers.
But what would, what would you all say? So, I'm sorry, were you done?
No, that's, hey, just wanted to make sure that.
Can we talk to that point specifically?
Absolutely.
So what would you all say to asking the E.D.C. to get us the numbers associated with how many, excuse me, Henry County residents, and then what that zip code breakdown is traveling to I-Tech? I think we need to know that. And if, and if the E.D.C. can't tell us that because Keita has no more ability on, on her current workload, then I think, guys, I think this is something that we need to queue up a consultant to, to help us with. I remember a few years ago, we discovered plus minus twelve thousand people wake up every morning and go to work in Henry County. And of the twelve thousand people, a little over sixty percent are driving into the county. That, that number shocked me, because if they're driving in in the morning, they're driving back out in the evening with our dollars and cents, and they're not living in our county. And I think that we need to, I think that we need to, to reset that analysis and look at hard facts, and then what are we gonna do to curtail those behaviors? I think that the building that's going on in Port LaBelle is essential. You tell me there's more building going on in LaBelle, that's huge. But Commissioner Swindle, you're, you're spot on whenever you say this affordable housing issue, it's not, it's not unique just to Henry. It's not unique to Cluiston, it's not unique to Harlem, it's not, it's everywhere. It's a nationwide issue. It's the first time that the county, I mean, excuse me, the state of Florida has not raised the Sadowski Fund and put it into general fund in the state in, in the history that I can think of. I don't remember the last time they didn't touch that. And, you know, so that's billions of dollars that have been removed from the state's ability to build affordable housing in a, in effort to balance the, the budget. The budget is looking good, because sales tax revenues and a number of other things are up, the economy's eating like a mad cow. What, what, what can we do locally, though, to focus? And I think that this, this board is, has taken upon themselves to say, we're gonna focus on infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. That's kind of our focus, in my opinion. And we're trying to put infrastructure in the ground, we're trying to increase our road capacity, we're trying to make sure that eighty's gonna get opened, you know, all of those things. And I think that that's the number one thing that we can control. Now, there's some other things that we can set from a policy standpoint, but I, I wanna challenge you all, and before you leave us, before you go to your next post, I wanna make sure that you hear me loud and clear, this is something that we need to be working in lockstep with the school system on, you know? We need to know, how many, how many babies are we graduating from C.H.S., L.H.S.? What are they going into the workforce like? How many are going on to technical school? How many are going on to community college? How many are going on to a four-year university? And then what percentage of, of that crop is actually coming back after they've gotten that four-year degree or that two-year certification or whatever that may be? You know? There's, there's countless study out there that shows you live and die, you know, within sixty miles of where you were, you were created. And, and, I mean, it's a huge percentage of that that occurs. In Henry County, we, we, we miss that mark so much, because when our young people go off and get educated, they dip, they never come back, because the opportunity doesn't exist for them. And Ms. Bird, I listened to the things that you're telling me you're working on from a gap standpoint, and what I heard you speak to last night at the community meeting in Pioneer. I listened to what you're talking about, Commissioner Swindle. Commissioner Swindle, you're not bragging enough. You just got one point four million dollars from D.E.O. You know, Emily doesn't wanna brag on herself, she killed it. I know what she did up in Tallahassee this year. Jennifer, you've brought in USDA, you've brought in a couple of these other people. You know, I've sent y'all a thousand and one emails, and I know you hate me sometimes, but the reality is, is that I'm asking these questions, cause I wanna know, what is our next step that we're looking to work on? But I think that we've, we've gotta start telling that story, and we've gotta be laser-like focused on the things that we can't control, and infrastructure, 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 all those things. And that's gonna bring development and all that stuff. The big boxes are no longer gonna pass us by if we have the cost per unit down so that The big boxes are no longer going to pass us by if we have the cost per unit down so that they can actually build. So I don't know. This is just something I'm extremely passionate about. Uh, this and education are what keep me up at night. It's what drives me to, to, to go to work every morning because I've said it and I know it offends some people, but Henry County is not the beautiful county that I grew up in and graduated from high school in nineteen ninety-five. And that's on us to fix it. And I think that we're taking some market steps to, 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 to move that needle. But I just, I want to keep laying that challenge down to us and checking off boxes and getting it done. Commissioner, can you just tell us one point four million? You had another grant that Mario Diaz-Billard announced. It was like six hundred and something thousand.
About four hundred and sixty.
Okay, and then there was a, there was one more in there else?
Two hundred thousand the year before that from USDA.
Yeah.
Two USDA's. So it's about two point, I mean, I, it's roughly two point four, three million dollars. I don't know.
Slow down, tough guy. Why are you bragging, man? Come on, now. That's incredible though.
And that's outside money, not Henry County tax, you know, it's tax money from somewhere, but nonetheless, it's outside money that's influenced what our ability to grow and provide opportunity.
What happens when the money runs out?
So, so the, the model has to be sustainable and that's part of the grant. And so our, our funding model has more than doubled our income from the state because of the growth that we've had. So we're very sustainable.
When I talk to those people, it's coming in and out, they just say, there's no place to stay.
Yeah.
There's no house and no nothing.
Well, I think too, I mean.
They turn around and take off.
There's, there's, there's a number of corollaries to why they're not staying. And I think we need to start asking those hard questions and listening to the, to the feedback that we get. And I, and I think that we've got to take some hard looks in the mirror and make sure that, you know, we're, we're presenting our best foot forward so that we can, we can court those people to get them to want to stay and spend their tax dollars and live, work and play here, so.
Got a ton of school teachers.
We do have a ton of school teachers that reside or.
Lit drive.
Drive.
I have a, I have a teacher at LaBelle, the Ag teacher. She lives on Alico Road in Fort Myers.
That's what I mean.
It's the closest thing she can find.
If you drive. If you drive from Alico Road every day.
Yep.
You deserve something.
You ain't kidding. Yep.
Is that it? Anything else, Mr.?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Bird?
No, I'm fine. Just thank on the county for the curtains and everything that they're doing to help me move forward, to help me build. So I appreciate it. That's it.
No, I was watching Margaret.
Actually got you a little word once you get out of here.
Get you a turn. I'm good, brother. Thank you.
Well, you ain't bragging neither.
I'm going to. I ain't never going to. Grandma would beat me.
Proud of Mr. Turner. He represented the pack in, uh, Henry County amazingly in Washington, uh, a week ago. He did, laid the reef of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier.
Very honorable. I was so, so honored to be able to do that.
Yes, sir. You've done an amazing job, everything. Both of us were able to listen to, uh, quite a few really, really good speakers, a lot of wisdom, a lot of knowledge. Ben Carson, he, um, very knowledgeable, um, very wise man. General Colin Powell, he dropped nuggets all over the place, just amazing.
Was so awesome.
Uh, President Trump spoke for about an hour. It was, I was.
Scheduled to speak for fifteen minutes.
Yep, and he was twenty minutes late and spoke for about an hour.
Been trading.
Also, you know, just, just to, just to drop a little bit of this here, you know, we were talking about these, but it was really amazing because I got to talk to people that wasn't just from Florida. They were from all over the nation. And the problems we're facing are not Henry County problems. Our fire EMS, Sheriff's Department funding, that is nationwide. That is nationwide. Housing is nationwide.
Yes, sir.
Every one of them were talking about the same, exact same thing we're talking about here. So what we're talking about here is nothing compared to just to Henry County. And that, until you get where you can actually sit in the room and talk to these other people, that was one of the most amazing parts of the trip was actually to get into the dialogue with someone from New Mexico. Someone from Nevada, someone from Dakota. It was, it wasn't a matter of sitting in a room with just people from Florida. And some of the same situations we're battling, they're battling. But another one is coming. One of the biggest ones they were talking about in transportation is cars are becoming more economically sound. They're not buying as much gas. They're going to electric. They're trying to find a funding source now that when we lose our gas tax, that we will eventually lose. They're trying to find a finding, uh, source now, funding to replace that.